Prabhu Ina 20, Yesu Kristvaareka naamam perata, ochinuparshudhlandarki kodha vandhanalu teleparstunthu unthu nam. Devudu tanaka mahakrupanabatti sala masalu nallala tharvatha maniki avukashmi chedu sahavasam. Ane 20di naal gamchalu okkati pramikyamani thundide. Sangas apostolubada sahavasam rotivirtchuta pradhana ane 20adi dinallo unnathu 20, athme manitthu kravamo kabattu sahavasamane 20di adi tappansaradi. Devudu marek saari man khanigirinchadu andhre mitthu mai devaniki vandhanalu. Thiri yekka dinaana jariyathu 20di kudikani gurinchu konchichepthanu. Partalai painthu tharvatha vartthamanu unthundi. Sahodudu ayana joyalgaru Hyderabad man chencharu. Ayana man majin unthari dinaantaka kodha. Partalai painthu tharvatha oku vannavar. Vaka vartthamanu unthundi. A tharvatha mare oku parta partavanadi jaruguddi. Parta parde samayamalai orkana kindi veli raavalante shabdha lakonda veli rendi. A tharathu renda vartthamanam. I rendu vartthamanalu kodha nu panidhunara. Oda ku unti gantikalak close jethaniki main jostha. Tharvatha lunchi manu unthundi. Lunchi thinnatharvatha mana congregation no inti velipovu. Only savukale unthara pudu. Madhyana pota after lunch savukal matru untharu. Walaki tagirikundu vartthamanu walaki yavodusundu. Gutveetkondi. Udayam pota partalai painthu tharvatha vartthamanam. Tharvatha oku parta parta jaruguddi. Tharvatha renda vartthamanam. A tharvatha lunch. Lunch chepenanka mana general congregation inti velipovu. A tharvatha migilna 20di kontman savukalu parcher jese valu. Valu migilu untharu valu udeshinchu vaka vartthamanu chappu vadutha unthundi. Moodun narke moodu nalvayidika lak close jethu ne jaruguddi. Day chesi andhar corporate chain. Pradhana porukunga mari ekki bhavishta devudu tanaka naamani ki ganthathesukene varuguntaru. Mobile phonesu oraina kaligunte adi pettuntha sound lakonda bedkondi. Majjimaajilo adi ochinuka daaniparigathu manchidi kaada. Mikta valaki mana disturbantsadi. Pradhana jesukuni madhal bedkundama? Andhar makal medhakarandi? Mamalai andharani athtilika preemichina ma paralokupthandri. Meekka ghana mayna vunthamayna puujum padagina 20. Srashtamayna 20 naamam media. Andhukoraka me padalki stutulusotralu chelinsundu nam. I rithika ekka odai kalupu samayamaloo. Na thani sala nallala tharvatha second Saturday. Meem samukottu one 20di meekka krupa. Na thani sala mandiki yekka avukashm dakkale. Maak dakki nanti meem gopavaramani kadugani. Kavalam meekka krupa me kani karam vatsalita mamadu undiga batti. Meem meekka dinaana sajuvillakalavunsevada valamai. Ikkadu meem karabaduthu unthu nam. Andhukoraka me padalki vandhanalu stutulusotralu. Day galigina mathandri. Meer anta manchi devuduvi krupa kani karam daya vatsalitaya manchi tanam galigina 20 devudu miru. Na thani mamalu gani lakavidhte me sanidhul nilabattaniki yogita rahata lenethundu valame. Kani meer maaki yekka. Anathandri parshudhmane 20 ammulli manitthu paricharani. Meem konsaaginstandi ke adi machathulamir pittharu. Daniki na thani malo unnathu 20 manchitanangani. Gopatanangani hedu kane kadugani. Adi kavalam Yesu Prabhuvaru mamalidjaapkum chesukene. Ma korakai ayana tanaka rakthani kaachi mamalipavitra parichi. Meem nilabattaniki yogila ayane thayar jese. Ma valla kaada di. Na thani kanika mamalii rithika nilabettina 20. Ma Prabhu Ina 20 Yesu Kristvaareki marek saari stutulusotralu chelinsundu. Meem itlagunnamante adi anta kodha na thani ayana daya ayana krupa ayana kani karam. Andhupkundu meekku vandhanalu chelinsundu nam. Day galigina mathandri. Mari patheyhinga meeru ayapranthalunchi meethesukavachina beddalanthan bedkondi meek vandhanalu chelinsundu nam. Na thani pathivakkalu kodha daythamir siduparshandi. Ikkadu raautu mane 20di samayani durvinayogunchesko godhu. Na thani yavarku valle na thanri marek amiyagintlo. Ee rithika pravatinsalo a rithika pravatinchakramo. Andharki telusu thelinevala oru leer. Kanik meem maatradara. Na thanri ayaka unikini kaligi. Athani pravatbandharu kodha pravatinchakalukutla meere sahayam daychandi. Na thani ochinuvallanthan kodha chakkagamiru siduparshandi. Valavalaavasthalu maak tellidu gada. Anni meekay meere erugudru. Yavudavuru ee avasramto ee akkarukothdi me sanidhukocharu meer erugudru. Avannikodha manshulakka maatalvala tetsevadugu. Adi kavalam meek vaakhyinduvara athmadhavaneka sahayam duvara na than tetsevadagavu. Kanika na thani daniki taginithundu vartthamanam. Na than baitikiraagalke lagana meek dasunne daythamir abshikinsko valsintha manu jastu unthu nam. Mettu kuna prabha na thanri ikkadu me bedalu ee rithika koodkunthu untharu edhramuguru. Valan valamadhyana unthanu cheperu. Me sanidhi maathu unthi ma majila unthi. Kanika na prabha andhukoraka me padalki stutulusotralu. Me sanidhi malo maatho partu unthe na than ayaka bayamo. A bhakti adi vereelaga unthundi. Kanika na prabha na thani anta meek kaliginchinadhi me padalki stutulusotralu chelinsundu nam. Ma chuttukodhu me kanchu veendhi. Na than maak pranathma dehaalne daythamir me swadhulunskundu. Shatrugadungalinsukokunda unthelagana sahayam daychandi. Day galigina 20di mathandri. Lapaliku ochet 20di valu na thani athmadhavaneka thakidinibatti valu devinsavadara. Na than baiti velinagane adhe sangithanadaluto baitikivelithu. Valu kodha devinsabadetun sthailu valu unthara. A rithika unthelagana sahayam daychandi. Sutubakalaneekmani hindulu untharu. Valu kodha mechittamaithe meek vaakhyivini. Na than Yesu Prabhuini rasontarakshadu gangikirinchatu 20 avukasham mechittamaithe valu kodha daychandi. Day galigina 20di mathandri. Shatrugodha varvalenavade na thanri mare ayareethuliga na prabha. One 20 paristhitre samadhanani paurichetanike nekman prayatnali yastha unthar baitnunchi. Aviddingadharukokunda unthelagana meere sahayam daychavalsintha manu jastha unthu nam. Day galigina 20di mathandri. Meekay mahima ganatha prabhaval kaligunugaaka. Na thani mandirani mandir pranganani anta kodha sampuranga meere kaali chesi. Na than meek mahimuchathu nimpovalsintha manu jastha unthu nam. Ayayanta madhurunga unthundi. Anta anandanga unthundi. Na thani anta nemadigaligina valanga untham. Anta trukthikaranaga me untham. Kanika na thanri ayaka gadielimem pogutkunakunda unthelagana. Na than ashirvadakaranaga cheyvalsintha ni manu jastha unthu nam. Karne ventante meem meem ithalaki ashirvadakaranaga unthali. Anathundu udeshinthena meer mamalakshinchadu. Kanika na thanri mundu maak meem sari nethundu rithilo unthaku pote. Avatalu valaki meem ashirvadakaranaga unthareem gada. Kanika na thanri avannikodhu me mehptinsvadara sahayam daychandi. Na thani eevidhingana prabha adu unnadi anta varukunnu. Na thani partalu lo meere sahayam daychandi. Vartthamanalu meere sahayam daychandi. Na thanri a tharvatha na thanri lunchi samayamalokodi meere sahayam daychandi. Evening jariyathu 20 savukalu kudikalokodi meere sahayam daychandi. Praarambum unnadi anta varukku adu unnadi anta varukku me sanidhi maathu unthundi. Day galigina 20di ma prabha na thanri mare me mandharam kodha. Me sanidhul bayinto bhaktidaku chune ma prabhu padalagarame savukyesukundu sagipogalige 20 chakkati. Ashirvadakarame samayam chathu mamalai devinsvalsintha. Mamalii ma kutumalii marek saari me padalagabetkundu. Na prabha na thanri me richinathu 20 avukashanabatti. Iyekka samayanabatti meekay vandhanalu stutulusotralu chelinsundu. Marek saari meek naamani mahimpatshunku ganpatshunku ina kodhi pradhana. Na Prabhu Ina 20 Yesu Kristvaan perata meekili vane porukumuga pradhinchu bhadmaladu vedkunsunna antanri. Amen. Man alli pelustha na? Rend. Man aadwaru potikadu partla parde 20 pillalu unthar gada. Danny ekkunadu? Raagala vathamdu? Anta? Inka orna raagalra? Aarilavunch yavarena parta Abraham da. Konchu jariyimundu kutsa. Varshakramulukutsundu manchidi. Lines. Hmm adi better adi better. Meem neemanku pote nellavandha. Nellavadi i part parde tapudu. Madhatchadam parde tapudu konchu mundu jargirande atath kutsupadu. Andharki ochinathu 20di parta. Iyeka chenna partla buskamaloo madhati parta madhati parta. Chenna partla buskamaloo madhati parta. Anandamu Prabhu nakosagen. Amma raava ra. Andharu linele raava. Linele rendi. Aali unthasota meek meere self discipline nantar gada?
Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Ayulla mandhu Yesu vachin na jeevita rajayeno. Ayulla mandhu Yesu vachin na jeevita rajayeno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Prabhu ni ruchinchu yegitheni entho entho prema moti. Prabhu ni ruchinchu yegitheni entho entho prema moti. Rishvaamantane ganchaledu viluvaina Prabhu premanu. Mahamantane ganchaledu viluvaina Prabhu premanu. Prabhu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Na santosham samutraku alalampoli payiki uppangi yekayuchunde. Na santosham samutraku alalampoli payiki vellangi yekayuchunde. Nannu pilachi ennau melu ladhesen nuhtana jiva mosagen. Nannu pilachi ennau melu ladhesen nuhtana jiva mosagen. Prabhu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Shatrugun yedirinchu poraadegan vidayamu konda balamundedan. Shatrugun yedirinchu poraadegan vidayamu konda balamundedan. Prabhu utaloka munjaiyinchadan ayanato jeevinchadan. Prabhu utaloka munjaiyinchadan ayanato jeevinchadan. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno. Ayulla mandhu Yesu vachin na jeevita rajayeno. Ayulla mandhu Yesu vachin na jeevita rajayeno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita rajayeno. Anandamu Prabhu nakosageno na jeevita me mareno.
Kuchana ma andharu kuchala. Man a petha partla buskamaloo aaruvandhalu moodu. Adi patha partla buskumaithe aiduvandhalu enemidi. Rakshanaavunthiyamu raksha kude telukku. Aaruvandhalu moodu aiduvandhalu enemidi.
Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Valinavaskramuvalene hemi urthi binin thalatho. Valinavaskramuvalene hemi urthi binin thalatho. Katri madhiri gama mu vedakivachi etagama mu raichedu. Katri madhiri gama mu vedakivachi etagama mu raichedu. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Adugoneno paramvathincha adupa pavale kachin. Adugoneno paramvathincha adupa pavale kachin. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Kanasvachyamuga kana bagamuga kana aganya muganayi mi. Kanasvachyamuga kana bagamuga kana aganya muganayi mi. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Abrahamo chen yeyayesu ekhirikaramu lano. Abrahamo chen yeyayesu ekhirikaramu lano. Kanasvachyamuga raksha kude telukku. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Rakshanaavunthiyamu raksha kude telukku. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Yesu ni satyamudo parvathasikaramudo. Aripunamagu Prabhu rajanado arikivathayuno. Rakshanaavunthiyamu raksha kude telukku. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Rakshanaavunthiyamu raksha kude telukku. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi. Parvathasikara senulavale ne nijalamayinadi.
Day chesi governance andri. Mari tamul samayal kathurunchi ravalsavala andharu ochesnatana? Tharvatha rayvadunchi tamudjeeda? Huh? Alasthunara. Tharvatha dayanada nagaranunchi? Andharu ochinathana? Right ante rayvadval raava. Pendutthuunchi andharu ochinathana brother? Ochera? Gopal raidpatunchi andharu ochera? Okay. Aarilavununchi? Okay right. Tharvatha willu mana bobbili? Sorry. Almost all ocheru rayvadval raava. Inka chenna parta parta pardukunthu tharvatha vartthamanu madhal bedkundu. Sareena? Go. Five minutes lo. Karumajes. Chenna parta aaruvandhalu aidu. Aiduvandhalu padi. Na hurdayamu vinthaga maranane danlo. Yedu chernalu unnah. Alternative parukunna okkati moodu aidu yedu. Okkati moodu aidu yedu.
Na hurdayamu vinthaga mareno. Na hurdayamu vinthaga mareno. Na hurdayamu vinthaga mareno. Na lo Yesu vachinandu na. Na lo Yesu vachinandu na. Santoshame samadhaname. Santoshame samadhaname. Isantoshamo nitukavale na. Isantoshamo nitukavale na. Isantoshamo nitukavale na. Ere Yesu galkatho Rammo. Ere Yesu galkatho Rammo. Jyakshivamo nitukavale na. Jyakshivamo nitukavale na. Jyakshivamo nitukavale na. Nishantosamo, nikukavale na, ere Jesu gakato rambo Ere Jesu gakato rambo Jesu Kristono, nere ketu, Jesu Kristono, nere ketu Pravisikshu nirulavantu, pravisikshu nirulavantu Santosame samadhaname, santosame samadhaname
Right, brother, you will always know. My brother, Hyderabad, and then, we will go there. Tomorrow, Katthur, at the front door, the church, for God, I will go there. He will still be with us, he will be with us, and then, he will be with us. So, right, I will go there, and then, we will go there, and then, we will go there, and then, we will go there. Prayer, brother.
I mean, I mean, this is my time, this is my time. This is my time, this is my time, in the middle of the night, twenty-four hours. Those twenty-four hours, we wait for you. We look at it, we wipe it, these three things. We look at it, we wipe it, like that, we wait for you. In Bible, there are many truths. I will tell you one truth. He that waited on master shall be honored. He that waited on master shall be honored. When you wait for him, he is honored. Proverbs chapter twenty-seven verse eighteen. The Lord is good unto them that wait for him. The Lord is good unto them that wait for him. If anyone waits, they will do whatever they want. This is written in the book of the book of the Bible. Wait upon the Lord continually. Wherever you go, wherever you go, I will wait for you. This is written in the book of the Bible. There is a small thing in the Bible that is waiting for you. Waiting for you, looking at it, or wiping it. Whether it is a difficult thing, whether it is easy. It is difficult to say. In Christ's faith, this small thing is very important. I have heard about this. Waiting for you is not the same as waiting for God. There are many things in the Bible. Abraham waited for a girl. I know this. Whether it is a bad thing or a good thing. Whether it is a bad thing or a good thing, I know. The Lord has taught me this. Isaac, Isaac, he waited for twenty-four years. He waited for Bible first. Jacob went to the east and waited twenty-one years. When Joseph went to the north, he waited for thirty-four years. He went to the church with his children. He went to the church. He went to the church. He went to the church. When Moses went to the church, he went to the church. 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 David went to the church. You know, in the book of the Bible. In the book of the Bible, in the book of the Bible. He said, my time is over. My time is over. When you went to the church, you saw the angels. He said, you are going to the east. He said, you are going to the east. My time is over. My time is over. You see, your time and my time are always ready. Dear brother and sister, your time and my time are always ready. But, in faith, the Lord is present. He is present in the middle of the night. Looking at it. Looking at it, like that, wiping it, it is written in the Bible. It is written in the Bible. In the book of the Bible, twenty-four years. Whoever is watching, they are watching. They are watching. They are watching. In the book of the Bible, they are watching. They are watching. They are watching. Right? They are watching. He praised the Lord. He praised the Lord. It is good, it is always, forever, good. For those believers who wait upon the Lord for salvation. Praise the Lord. In whatever circumstance, in whatever custom, the Lord has taught us. There is another thing in the Bible. There are forty-four things in the book of the Bible. There are forty-four things in the book of the Bible. I am grateful. 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 But, if you go. The Lord is present in my time. If someone goes, they will go to the church. If someone goes, they will go to the church. If someone goes, they will go to the church. If someone goes, they will go to the church. They will go to the church. If someone goes, they will go to the church. They will go to the church. Is it God's will that I should go abroad or not? They will know. They will know. They will wait for you. At that time, the Lord will tell them. He will tell them. He will help them. He will help them. He will help them. The person is saved. A person is saved. He is saved. He waited for you. He prayed 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 for you. I waited for you. I waited for you. I waited for you. I waited for you. You are a king, you are a queen. You are a prince. You are a prince. You are a prince. I am a prince. You are a prince. If anyone is looking at it, I will tell you. If anyone is looking at it, I will tell you. There are many things. Many things. Many things. The Lord is present. What I will do, I will tell you. I will tell you. Like that, when I was in the hospital, I was scared. If I was in the hospital, I was scared. If I was in the hospital, I was scared. Why would you do that? Why would you do that? In the Bible, I have told you. If you go to the hospital, you will be scared. Dear friends. As a believer, in faith, our responsibility, our primary responsibility. When I am scared, I will tell you. I will tell you. The Lord has told me. I have told you. I will do whatever I want. I will do whatever I want. I will do whatever I want. If you go to the church, you will go to the church. If you go to the church, you will go to the church. The Lord has told me. The Lord said, go and stand on the main road. Who is standing on the main road? Are cars standing on the main road? The Lord said, the Lord is here. The Lord is here. He is here. He is here. Someone came to me. Hello, mister, how are you? I am fine. How are you? Fine. Why would you go to the church? If you go to the church, you will go to the church. He said, I have two children. The Lord. I am standing here. Who is standing on the road? Your knowledge, your university knowledge. If you go to the church, you will go to the church. If you go to the church, you will go to the church. Dear brother and sister, dear friends. Waiting for you, wiping it, there are many things. In the Bible, I have told you. There are seven things in the Bible. You are going to the church. I have told you. The Bible tells us. We will tell you. I have told you. I have told you. He is looking at it. Wiping it. If the Lord answers the question, he will answer. He will answer. If you are looking at it. If you are looking at it. The answer is always there. It is always there. It is always there. God's time is the best time. Until then, the answer is always there. There are many things. If you ask the question, you will go. If you ask the question, you will go. I will ask the question. I will ask. In some cases, in some cases. We pray. The Lord said, I am grateful. I am grateful. I am grateful. The answer is always there. I will go. If the answer is always there. That time, I will go. I will go. I will go. That is all. If I go, I will go. I will go. Acts of Apostles, chapter one, verse four. I will pray for you. I will pray for you. Acts of Apostles, chapter one, verse four. I will pray for you. I will pray for you. You are a prince. I am a prince. I am a prince. I will wipe it. Of course, in Christ's life, the Lord is a prince. He is a prince. If you pray, you will go. If you pray, you will go. If you pray, you will go. In faith, wiping it. Why would you do that? Why would you do that? I am a prince. I am a prince. Why would you do that? I have told you. In some cases. He is a prince. That is all. Promise even to fulfill by the Lord. It has its own time. That is all. In fact, a man is a saint. He will go to the church. 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 There are many difficulties. I will wipe it. The Lord is a friend. I will wipe it. I will wipe it. I will wipe it. I will wipe it. Some things, I have told you. The Lord is here. Psalm one hundred and six, verse thirteen. I am. I am. I am. Wiping it. Of course, I am. Our council, they will do some things. 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 Of course, I am. In faith, they will pray. They will pray. The Lord is present. They will pray. They will pray. I am. They are two sides. They are two sides. I am. What will you do? What will you do? The Lord is here. His heart is playing. When you play, you will know. Do you think there are fans? Do you know? It is like this. I have told you. The person is present. I think it is. I think it is. It is internal prayer. When prayer is present. The person goes. The person goes. I have a Bible in my bag. But, the mind is in the Lord. I am praying for you. I am praying for you. I am praying for you. When you go to the church. The Lord is present. That I am. There are many things. In fact, when I am thinking, I will go. I have some M-Tech, MBBS, MDSC. I have some M-MSI. I have some M-COM. I have university knowledge. I have my own understanding. 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 When I pray, I go. I go. Some things, some losses. I have lost. I have lost. I have lost. When I was in the church. I had thirty-four years. I was in the church. I was in the church. I was in the church. I had surgery. I had surgery. I was in the hospital. I was in the hospital. What is it, father? What is it? I drove it. I was in the car. I was in the car. I was in the car. It is hard. I am. There are many things. Like that, there are many things. There are four things. There are four things. Thirty-four years. There are forty-four years. Psalm thirty-three. I am. There are forty-four years. The Lord is here. He is here. He is here. He is here. Each one unexpectedly, when you go to the church. There are many things. If you go to the church, you will go. If you go to the church, you will go. What will you do? Say. What will you do? Even if you call your phone. If you have a smartphone. You can use a smartphone. What will you do? Israel, they are going to the north. They are going to the north. I am a prince. I am a prince. You are a prince. You are a prince. You are a prince. If you go, you will go. If you go, you will go. If you pray, you will pray. 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 Lord, help me. Make a way or create a way. Create a way so that I will walk. If you create a market. If you create a market. I will go. Like that. I will go. I will go. The Lord is here. I will go. Waiting for you. Of course, I am. I will go. I will go. I have a choice. I have a choice. I am. I am. I am. Dear friends. I am. I am. I am. I am. I am. In the Bible, I have told you. Everyone has taught you. I have taught you. No doubt, it is. Like that, the knowledge is different. The way to find the will of God is different. His heart is playing. I have learned. This is the Lord. This is the Lord. There is a thing in the Bible. I have a word. Do you speak? Do you speak? I am. Dear friends. I want to go. I want to go. I pray. The Lord is here. I want to go. I want to go. I pray. I am. I am. What will you do? I am. I am. I am. What will you do? I am. In fact, there are many things. I have learned. I have learned. In the Bible. I have learned. His heart is playing. If you pray, you will go. If you pray, you will go. If you go to mathematics. You will do three. What will you do? Say. Three, two, one. Four times. Okay, okay. I will do. I will do. If you go to the church. If you go to the church. I will do. I understand. I have a question. What question? They are all going to ask. If you pray, you will pray. If you pray, you will pray. I have told you. I have told you. If you pray, you will pray. If you pray, you will pray. The answer is always there. I have told you. I am. If you go. You will learn. You will learn. There are two, three years. There are two, three years. Book of Habakkuk, chapter two, verse three. The angels are singing. The angels are singing. I have told you. The Lord is here. He is here. He is here. He is a prince. He is a prince. The Lord is here. The Lord is here. The English word is vision. In the Bible, the word is vision. When I pray, the Lord is here. I know. The Lord knows. The word is vision. For example, I have told you. He is praying. He is praying. When he is praying, his heart is playing. When he is praying, his heart is playing. When he is praying, his heart is playing. I am. When he is praying, his heart is playing. When he is praying, his heart is playing. I have told you. That is vision. I know. I know. Do you know? Do you know? Do you know? Who knows? If you go to the church. I don't know. I don't know. The word is. The word is. The Lord is present. When I pray. I do. I do. I do. You wait. You wait. Wait, wait till that vision will be completed. The vision, the word is. Waiting for you. Always. Always. I am. The Lord is here. He is here. Second Peter. Second Peter, chapter three, verse twelve. Chapter three, verse twelve. Second Peter. Yes. Yes. I am. The Lord is here. The Lord is here. He is here. He is here. The Lord is present. He is here. When he is here. If I pray, I pray. If I pray, I pray. I am. The Lord is here. I pray. If you go. I am. I am. I am. I will be with the Lord forever and ever. The Lord is here. The Lord is here. When I pray. When I pray. Do you hear? When I pray. The Lord is here. The Lord is here. The Lord is here. I am. There are many things. I have a question. I have a question. Waiting for you. Wiping it. Right? Waiting for Christ. Waiting for Christ. What is better? I have a question. Okay? What things to be done? By a Christian? While waiting about anything. You have a question. You have a question. In the Bible. I have. In the Bible, I have heard. I have heard. I have heard. I have heard. I have a question. I have an assignment. I have a topic. This topic, whatever you prepare from the Bible. Make no doubt of all things. When you prepare, I will tell you. I have noted. There are many things. If you wait for Christ. If you wait for Christ. If you wait for Christ. If you pray. If you pray. If you pray. If you pray. When you pray. The Lord is here. He is here. शेमु कलगदु कदा, साव चेस्तो मंतुनी, साव कु नस्तन गलिंग चिटोंटे इदे अंडी नलेस यू वेट अपऑन डी लोड, एंड रिसीव अ वर्ड फ्रॉम डी माउथ ऑफ डी लोड, डी सेम आई विल डेलिवर टू डी पीपल ऑफ गॉड, अदे देवन प्रसिद्ध वारकी, एवटम, अदि प्रसिद्धु शेमु, राइट, सेवन इंपॉर्टेंट वर्क्स और सेवन एलिमेंट्स इनवॉल्ड इन वेटिंग, वेच यू नो डु लो, येडु, मठ्यमत चिका, आ क्राइस्ट टुडे एंच अस्ताद देसन, अतडु प्राधन चुवाड़ी गाउन ताद, प्राधन चेस्ट वन टुवाड़ी गाउन ताद, अतन जीवतम लो, प्राधन अनेद, अतन को ऊपर लांटि, ऊपर एंट देस कदम, ऊपर आयुपी एंटे ऊपर आयुपी पैन दी मना वो का, वो का ईरिविरोजल केतो, मुप्पैन सोंसा वो कमंसी फार्मासिस्ट, चिन्द्र चिन्द्र आड़ पिलर, वो का पदिन विश्यालो चन्पियाड़, पदिन विश्यालो, रिली गोट ए शॉक, असली, वालगानी, विश्वास गानी, पत्त शॉक आयुपे, पदिन विश्यालो, सोफा लो कोचिन टी तावतो, कप्पु दुले साल पड़ी पे आड़ अतन ने, हॉस्पिटल दिस केले टपड़की, एंटी डेड बॉडी दिस कोच्चरे एंटन ना डॉक्टर नाक इन्फॉर्मेशन वच्ची, नेन अलिंटी केले बॉडी चुस्सी टपड़की, आ बाबु वाल अम्मा, चाल मंच दाईविक में ना, विश्वास राल, बहु प्राधन पर्वाल, बाबु, पड़ुकुन टुनर जूस आवो, ऊपर ओकटे लेद आड़की, अनंत नातोड, यस, ऊपर लेद प्राधन ऊपर लांडा, प्राधन लो, प्राधन व्यक्तिगत अच्छे, निकेवना समान महिला ट्वेंटी, मनुस्त एकीपीच सहोदरी गानी सहोदरी एंट कल्स्ते, कलिशी प्राधन चे, लाकपोते, विष्यम, संघम तो पंचकॉल उनकुण्ड, संघम तो कल्लिस्त प्राधन चे, वो कवल अंतगारी कुंछ आलेश्मन उतुनी, कुंछ इबंद उतुनी, कुंछ ट्रबल बेट तुनी एंकुण्डे, उपवास प्राधन चे, उपवास प्राधन चे प्राधन लो, प्रभु ओपड़ा निक्याच्कोण, हेलो ओपल प्रभु, देसा, अंद्र की राधु, एंड कण्डे, अंद्र रु प्राधन चेट लेद प्राधन अनेद सामान्य में माटे, कनी, डी वे यू प्रे, इट मूव्स डी पीपल, इट मूव्स डी लोड, प्रभु नी कदर इस्तुन्दे हम, बिंदलो नीलु कुमरिंचन नटलु, देवन सनीदलो कुमरिंचन नेच कॉल, देन कम टेकु एमएससी अवस्थुन लेद, गुथपेट को, पीएचडी एंड कण्डे अवस्थुन लेद इलोपटन ट्वेंटी, आत्म, आ विश्वासनी, प्रेरिपिस्तदी, उच्चरिंपस्तकीम गान मूलुगुलतो, अतडु प्राधन चेस्तु वच्चन अपुडू, घंट समयम वो कन निमिशम लगड़िच पोतद, अदि अतन की आ प्रेरिपन लेद, प्राधन चेट लेद नुको, निमिशमें गंटला उन्तदी, यपुड़ा में चप्तारा, यपुड़ा में चप्तारा नुन्तदी प्राधन पर्व, दाईविजन बक्सिंगार, प्राधन पर्व, हम, देवन मी आधार पन्नी वाड़, देवन आश्रय इंची वाड़, देवन सनीदलो एड तेगेका, ए पनिकोरकेन सरे, ए अवस्थु गुरिंचे नसरे, आइन प्राधन चेस्तु, वच्च यू नाडुन संगति, आइन राजस्य पुस्तकालो, नालांटु वालु, मिलांटु वाल छोड़स एड तेगेका प्राधन चेवडी, विश्वासम तो प्राधन चेवडी, पट्टू वदलेका प्राधन चेवडी, माटलकी ई आलस्य मौत नपुडू, चाल मंदी विसिग्ग पोतद, विसिग्ग पोतद, चाल मंदी डिसकंफर्ट, असवकरीन फीलोतद, चाल मंदी की आयश्मोस्त, चाल मंदी की नेलश्मोस्त, चाल मंदी की, हमा, इबंदी बढ़ी पोतद हम, पक्कन नट वेन ट्वेंटी अलच्ची, चाल चाल ले, एम प्राधन जेसो, समय मंतो व्रदा, अन्नटु माटलार्तार, आम विश्वास नेद, विश्वासु नामिन बोल फॉर्जेस्तद प्रिमेन सहोदरी सहोदरी क्वेश्चन चपन, प्राधन चेस्त समयम, इन अदर वर्ड्स, वेटिंग टाइम इस नॉट वेस्टिंग टाइम, गुथपेट कोण, वेटिंग टाइम इस नॉट वेस्टिंग टाइम, वेटिंग टाइम, इन अदर वर्ड्स, इस अ टाइम ऑफ प्रिपेयरिंग फॉर डी फीचर टास्क, बौषत देन कोरकु, प्रभु नीन सिद्ध परु, देन कोरकु नु एदु चूस्तुनावो, आ पनिकोरकु, नीन सिद्ध पर्चे ट्वेंटी, कालमे, अदि एदु चुचे ट्वेंटी कालम, एदु चुचे ट्वेंटी कालम, प्रभु नीन सिद्ध पर्स्ताद, प्रभु नीन सिद्ध पर्स्ताद, बौषत्र एदु पनुन्दे, बौषत्र नु पलन चोट निरबड़ाली, पलन वारी कुवाकिंचे पाली, पलन चोट प्रसिद्ध को आत्म महिला ट्वेंटी, रोट्टे अंदिन साली, आइन प्रभु नन्नाइंचन अपुडू, प्रभु आ पनिकोरकु ईरोज ना, ईदिनालो वारनी, सिद्ध पर्स्तु, सिद्ध पर्स्तु वस्ताद, वारु गुड़ा प्रभु एक आरपोर्ट गुर्तिंची, एदु का संकल्प मुंदे, असंकल्पम कोरके प्रभु नी सिद्ध पर्स्तुनाद नुकुटा, अतु जैसे मठ्यमत टुपन एवटेंटे, प्राधन, मौकरिस्ताद, हमा, एकड़ीकी एलकुण्डा, यवनी कंसल्ट चेकुण्डा, ए विश्यम कोरकेन सरे, नी इंटलो तलुपेस्कुनी, नु प्राधन चे ईरोज कपटे रेपु, रेपु काकपोते, वच्चे वाड़, नी प्राधन कु देवुडु, मन प्राधन कु देवुडु जवाब इस्ताद, इली मठ्यमत टुचेस्ट पन, रंडो पन एंट देसम, रंडो पन एंट देसा, आ विश्वासी, आ विश्वासी येदु चाल, लाकपति चेत लो, ई परिशुद्ध ग्रंधम उन्तदी, ई परिशुद्ध ग्रंधम उन्तदी, अत्रें जस्तादु, वो का घंट से प्राधन जेसो, लप्तो करगण से प्राधन जेसो, लप्तो का घंटनर से प्राधन जेसो, अत्रें जस्तांटे, ई परिशुद्ध लेखनानी तरुस्ताद, ओपन जस्ताद, ईरोज ना पोर्शन एवटी, नेन वो दे एंस अद्वेन, अदि मलत सोतद, नेन रोज एंस अद्वेन, मलत सोतद, प्रभु नाकु एम उपदेश इस्ताद, प्रभु नाकु एम चप्पुतादु, हम, अदि इंपॉर्टेंट टास्क, बाइबिल एंदु चप्तम, एंदु चौथम देसा, प्रभु नाकु एम तो उपदेश इन जस्ताद, बाइबिल लो कमाटन देस कदा, निकु प्रयोषण गल्गुन ट्लो, नी देवुडे नी यहु अनुकु, ने ने निकु उपदेशम जस्तदुनु, नी नड़वल्सिन मार्गमु ना, निन्नु, नडिपिंसुदुनु, अंत सक्कगा उन्दी आई एम डी लोड, थाइ गोड विच टीचर दी टू प्रॉफिट, आई एम लीडर दी बाय डी वेद द उष्वर एस्ट गो, ये मार्गमु लो वेलालो, प्रभु उपदेश इस्ताद, आला प्रभु चेत उपदेशम पोद्वार धन्युडु, अनी नदा जूसंगदा, ईरोज नातो माटलार्ताद, लाकपोते सायंत्र वाटलार्ताड़ एमु, लाकपोते आदिवारु में कड़कोचे साव कुण्डी, कुन मंदी सिस्ट्रेस गानी, बेदस्कानी की साव कुण्डु पेस्ताद, देसा, एकड़ा स्टेज में गाद इंटलो आ सहोदरी, रात्रि प्राधन जसी, रात्रि प्राधन जसी, प्रभु नु भी, रेप मंदिर नो कुसुन्तानी, इकड़ी यवर वस्तार रानी, यवरीन निन्ना वानी, लोकल गानी, नान लोकल गानी, यवरीन नसरे, अतन द्वारे नाकु वो जवाब कावाली, नु जवाब इस्सा वायुवा, अनी ऊर्कने प्रभु तो गोडो जस्तद, मंचल तो गोडो पटिंगद, प्रभु तो गोडो पड़, निक्षमु कलुतद बाइबिल वाक्य, मीको कमाट चपन, चिन्न माटे, ई बाइबिल उन्ते, बाइबिल उन्ते, निकन्नी उन्नटे ई बाइबिल उन्ते, चपण, ई बाइबिल उन्ते, मीकु एम लेनट बतकद एम लेनट विचार करिंगानु, दिगुल गानु, आलक इदुन्दी, इलकुदुन्दी, अनी पुरचेपद बाइबिल, इफ यू हैव बाइबिल, यू हैव एवरीथिंग, इदु का फेमस प्रोवर्ड इन डी स्टेट ऑफ इथोपिया, इथोपिद देसम लो, वो का प्रमुख महिला ट्वेंटी सामितेदी, आकड़ी गेलीना कुद्रोसलो, पत्तिवाली ईमाट एंटनार, एंटी ईमाटी, ईमाटी का अर्थमेवटनी, वो का इंग्लिश लेक्चरल नडियानी, एमटा पदमेवट एंटे, आइन जिप्पड, इफ यू हैव बाइबिल, यू हैव एवरीथिंग, डेट इस व्हाट वी से इन इन आवर लैंग्वेज, मसाफ की दूसरले, कुल्ल अल्ले, अनंत रवाई, मसाफ की दूसरंडे परिशुद्ध ग्रंधम, अल्ले, एंटे उन्ते, कुल्ल अल्ले, एंटा अर्थमेवटनी, मठ्यमनी उन्नाइन प्रिमेन सहोदरी सहोदरी, परिशुद्ध, परिशुद्ध ग्रंधम, परिशुद्ध ग्रंधानी, मनुम काली गुणता रीड, अंदकुने, अनुदेनमु ना गडपायत कान्य पेट तुकुनी, ना द्वार बंधम लेद काचुकुनी, ना उपदेशम निवार बाइबिल की, देवन वाक्य निकु बट्टमत इस्तान में वेन, अपुडु प्रभु, नी हृदय मेरी नेट वन टुवाडु, निन्नु नीतो माटलादानी गिस्ट पर्ट वन टुवाड, निकु तेली पर्चनानी गिस्ट पर्ट वन टुवाड, निकु स्पास्तनग, नु ये स्थायलो लव, आ स्थायलोनी, निकु प्रभु सक्कगा, निकु बाइल पर्स्तु वस्ताद, करी प्रिमेन सहोदरी सहोदरी रंडो दी, बाइबिल सावत वस्तादु, बाइबिल विंट वस्ताद वे ना प्रचेक में संदर्भ मुंदी, अवो एकड़ीन चोक ब्रदर वस्तुनाद, वो के साव कु वस्तुनाद, आइन द्वारा कवलनातो प्रभु माटलार्ताद, लेट मी लिसन डी स्टेल्स मोल वॉइस ऑफ गॉड, देवन एकम मेलनाइन स्वरानी, नेनु विनाली, 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 अदि विंटाद मुड़ो दी, हमा, मुड़ो दी, मुड़ो दात्र चेस्स पन एवट देसा, यवरु, यवर चेस्स पन, वेच यू नो डे क्राइस्ट टुडे जस्ते, मुड़ो पन एवट देसम, अतडु सहवासम काली गुणता, फेलोशिप
prepare just now, all of them were okay to say, or they were not okay to say. Manikumar got it. How is that? In Naluguru Kalasi, one can go to the airport, one can go to the hospital, one can go to the hospital, one can go to the hospital. Kalasi, that is called partnership, fellowship loan, this is what it is. What is this fellowship loan, what is this? Communication. What is this communication? If there is a question, immediately, in every church, you have a WhatsApp group. If there is a question, so and so sister is not well admitted in hospital, serious condition, please kindly remember and uphold her in your prayers, and message sent. Church group members, all of them also go there, communication. The question is told. When a Sahodara, all of a sudden called by the Lord, to heaven, please, all brothers, young people, come on, get together within one to two hours, try to come to so and so place. When the place, they go into the house, you know? Any problem? Immediately, first and most important, where to keep this body, burial place should be, box should be, path should be, while into a national incident, walking should be, otherwise, they will be deported, they will be forced, they will be forced. They will supply one short time, go to a place, any problem, ten to twelve, see. Communication is very, very important. What is this? Naluguru, what is this? Distribution. Distribution, when you distribute it. Brother, you go here, brother, you go here, brother, you go here, brother, you show your mic, you show your computer, online, if it is good, you should show it, you do carpets, you sweep it, you, here, there are problems. You, you, you do matin service, you serve sahambar. At marriage reception, I serve, my sister, my sister, she is very close. I went to sahambar. My sister, she went to the church, she said, why are you going there? I said, where are you going, she said, I am going to matin. You go to matin, I said. She went to the matin bucket. You know, those believers who are known to me well familiar, they talk like this. Our brother is there before the matin bucket, come, let's go there only. I did not do it. 17 minutes, 15 buckets of matin served. But he put a plate, a tray, and he said, I will put it, I will eat it. Distribution. Otherwise, 15 minutes, I was talking to him. This is dangerous, this man, he went to 15 buckets, he said, why is it? Yes, he said. Believers are happy, you know, because we have received enough quantity because of joy. Distribution. This is Sahavasam loan, it is. Am I right? What is this? Conversation. Conversation, when you talk to each other. Brother, how many days have you been here, how are you? Is there something else? Brother, we are praying, what is this type of conversation? We are talking, we are praying, we are talking, we are talking, we are talking. Is it okay, is it convenient? Are you going there, are you working there, what about your mother, father, you told that your father is not well? Is that? This is called Sambhasana. Spiritual conversation. I have a big problem with you, I have a big problem with you. I don't know anything. Otherwise, there are points, you know, you are doing meditation, you are doing meditation. There is a clue, you know, I will tell you. You don't know anything. I will tell you. Dear Sahodara, Sahodara. Conversation. What is this? Sharing. Sharing. You should give it. This is sharing. One of them should give it. You should give 50 rupees to Sahodara, I will give 10 rupees, take this 10 rupees and buy some rice and dough, and eat and sleep. Come tomorrow for the prayer house, we will see, we will pray for you, God will take care of your need, don't worry. See? Sharing. Customers come, share it, happy, content, happy. My granddad, my uncle, he spoke to us, he spoke to us, he spoke to us. He spoke to us. Is that? When I was in the house, there was a lot of difficulty, we went to the house, we went to the house, we went to the house. In the house, we prayed, we prayed, we prayed, we prayed. You see, sharing of their difficulty. This is sharing. Anything necessary, they share it. What is this? What is this? Sponsorship. Sponsorship. Am I, I am paying. In my prayer room, in my prayer room, this is very important, my mic is not on. Inverter is not on. Inverter is not on, we will pray. The Lord will provide, let it be 20,000 or 30,000 or 3,000, that is secondary. Wherever you go, the Lord will help you. Whatever you do, it is different. It is a result. Otherwise, life is open. Open. My brother, my sister, this is, I fixed it. This is my inspiration from the Lord, please don't tell to anybody. No, no, I will tell. That's all. Sponsorship. This VBS is connected, VBS, VBS is connected, VBS time, what is this? I was in the house, I was in the house, I was in the house. I was paying, I was paying. I was paying. I maintained my accounts. They came, what is it, a day, a day, a day, a day, ice cream, what is it? Any ice cream, 2,000 children are there, including teachers, 500 extra, 2,500 ice creams, wholesale price, one ice cream, 10 rupees, 10 into 2,500, is that? 25,000, is that correct? I have been thinking about it. 25,000 into 10, yes. Brother, I will take care of that assignment. I will tell, I have a source, we will tell it, you pay 25,000 to him only, don't give us, and he will supply. Finished. This is sponsorship. Giving, giving to the people, giving to the Lord, and serving the people, whatever, poor people are there. Please. When I was in the house, my family, they were deported. Poor people, one Naluguru, another Naluguru, we paid 50,000. Even if you pay less, it is difficult. Do you? Sponsorship. Even if you do it. Sahavasam, what is this? You should change it. Whatever you do, you should change it. Anyway, online, I will show you. Otherwise, Naluguru, what is this? He went to the church. If it is difficult, he went to the church, he would go to the church. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. You should do something, whatever the word the Lord has given, the Lord has given. That thing, he should do, 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 do. Walking to the church, cleaning, sweeping, singing, whatever it may be, he went to the church. He went to the church. In the church, he went to the church. Go to the house, take your mic. There are problems, in the church. Open air, door to door ministry. I have a solid, sisters, brothers, I will do whatever I want, whatever I want. In the church, I have a lot of difficulty. The Lord, the Lord, he will help you. Very difficult. Very difficult. He will help you. He will help you, he will help you. I will do it. I will do it. He went to the church, he went to the church. What is this? He went to the church. He went to the church. This is what he did. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. He went to the church. When I was in the house, he went to the church. My Lord is enough for me, I will do it. He went to the church, he went to the church. He went to the church. What is this? No comparison. No comparison with any other brother or sister or any other person. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. Why is there comparison? My uncle went to the church, my uncle went to the church, all of them went to the church. He went to the church, he went to the church, he went to the church. He went to the church. Locals compared. My uncle, he went to America. I will tell you, I will tell you, I will tell you. I am scared. Why is it? His plans are different. Okay, if Lord permits, he would allow it, America, Australia, whoever is there? I went to the church, I went to the church, I went to the church. Straight forward question, did you find God's well? But. He went to the church. My uncle went to the church, my uncle went to the church. Uncle, he went to the church, uncle, he went to the church. Uncle, aunt, I will tell you. I will tell you. He went to the church, he went to the church. If he goes, I will do it. I will do it, this is the way. I will do it, I will do it. I will do it. I will book the ticket, I will pray. What is the ticket? Go to the house, go to the house, who is there? Happy, go there. He went to the church. No comparison. Everyone, this is. Some polls say, they are going to the church. I will pray. He went to the church. I will go to the church. He went to the church. He went to the church. He went to the church. My Lord will take care of my tomorrow. I went to the church, I went to the church. I went to the church, I went to the church. He went to the church. He went to the church. No comparison. Everyone, everyone, polls. Compared. Everybody, every person, there is an airport, there is an airport. The Lord went to the church, the Lord went to the church. He went to the church, he went to the church. How many people are there? How many people are there? How many people, I will say, Namaskaram. I will say, I will say. This is my uncle, my uncle, he is very good. What is this? Loss is loss only. Everyone is doing it. Who is this? Why is it? He went to the church. He went to the church. Dear Sahodara, Sahodara, no comparison. Everyone, everyone, polls. Who is this? He went to the church. What is this? He went to the church. The second one, he went to the church. What is this? Naluguru, he went to the church. Five, he went to the church. What is this? He went to the church. I will do it. I went, I went, I went. I was talking, I was talking. This is necessary for me. The word enough for my life, the word more than enough. I went to the church. He 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 went to the church. The Lord helped me. I will do it. Otherwise, 15 minutes, everyone, go to the washroom, go to the washroom, go to the washroom. Silence, go, go. I will tell you, no comparison. He went to the church, he went to the church. I will do it.
I will pray, I will pray. My brother, we are going to the church, we are going to the church. We are going to the church, we are going to the church. We are going to the church. I am going to the church. We are going to the church. With this, I will say, I will say. My brother, we are going to the church, we are going to the church. With this, we are going to the church. Yes, I will pray.
Amen.
I will pray. I will do it. In my book. Sati lane, this is. 354. I will do it. 354. I will do it. My brother, we are going to the church, we are going to the church. We are going to the church, we are going to the church. We are going to the church, we are going to the church. We are going to the church, we are going to the church. I am going to the church. Through walking, I will help you. When we are going to the church, we will help you. I will say, I will say. I will say. I will write a note, I will help you. I will help you. We are going to the church. We are going to the church. My brother, I will help you. I will say, I will say. I will help you. We are going to the church. My uncle, I will help you. I will say, I will say. I will say. Yes, Christ, I will help you. I will say, I will say.
Amen.
I will say.
My brother. Ishya Grantham, 44. 44 years old. My brother, you are going to the church. When you are going to the church, you are going to the church. When you are going to the church, you are going to the church. You will help me. You will use it. 64, Book of Isaiah. Ishya Grantham, 44 years old. My brother, I will do it. When you are going to the church, you are going to the church. Your uncle, he went to the church. He went to the church. He did not help you. He did not help you. He did not tell you. This is what he did. This is what he did. He went to the church. He went to the church. He went to the church. I will tell you. This is difficult, it is difficult, it is difficult. He went to the church. 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 The Lord is angry. The Lord is angry. The Lord, my brother, my brother, my brother, my brother, what is it? You are going to the church, you are going to the church. You are going to the church, you are going to the church. You are going to the church. Right. The Lord, this is what he did. He went to the church. He went to the church. When you are going to the church, you are going to the church. He went to the church. When he went to the church, the Lord did something. He did something. He did what he did, what he did. When he went to the church, he did what he did. He went to the church. The Lord helped him. He went to the church. He went to the church. The Lord did something. He did something. Miracle, wonder. He did. In the Bible, there are a lot of things. I have not spoken. बाइबल लो चाल अद्भुत लो लिखिंस बढ़ाए नी नवनी चप्पड़ा जस्कुले दी गानी को पात्र ने बंदन लोक मूडू कथनी बंदन लोक रंडु दिस कोस्ता पात्र ने बंदन लो अटे या अद्भुत मने दी एप्पु जरूरत नांटे आयन समय मंदु पुर जरूरत दी आव देश ने तो चुरंडी यहोश्वर ग्रंधमु 6 वाच्या यहोश्वर ग्रंधमु 6 वाच्या मु 24 वाचन बुक ऑफ जॉशुआ चैप्टर 6 6 वाच्या मु 6 वाच्या मु 24 वाचन मामा मेरा गंडी कुछ ब्रदर पेट दुबा पेट को तुम्हारा जादवानी साल प्रिमेना सहोदर एकदा विश्व में एंटे आई एरिको गोडलो कोलटन की प्रभु चिपड़ आर दिनालो रोज के वक रोज चपड़े तेरे गल येरो रोज ना येर साल तेरे गल इधि प्रभु चेप्पन माटा नू सोमवार वंते कुदर्दो मंगलवार वंते कुदर्दो सुकुरवार वंते कुदर्दो यू शुड वेट अप तू डी लास्ट सेवेंथ डे येरो दिनालो येरो रोज ना येर साल नु तेरी ना बड़ू आज समय आने वार पार्टी इंच ना बड़ू एरिको गोडलो कोलबड़ा आठ टंक करंगा उन्नदी आदि तली पे इन्ही वक अद्भुत चुश्ता यबड़ू वेली तबेरू यबड़ू वेली कोटिया डॉग गोडनी यबड़ू तवले दो यबड़ू कोटिले आगोड़ा दानंतर दे तली पे पे इन्ही इधि वक अद्भुत वक अच्छे रिकर में 20 कार्य इसराइल लंगरो चूस्ना प्रभु येरीत गा येरीत गा मां को एरिको पे विश्व में इस्ता डू अनुकुन्ना येरीत गैस तारी यबड़ी की तेलीद कनी प्रभु चेस्ट आदु प्रभु मा पक्ष ने इधन चेस्ट आदु ने 20 विश्व ने विश्वसिंचन वारे अला चूस्तून अपड़ू एरिको गोडलो कोलबड़ा या अद्भुत मने दी प्रभु समय मंदु जरिने 20 डे रेंडो डे सेकंड किंग्स चैप्टर 7 रंडो राज रू येर वाच्या रंडो राज रू येर वाच्या मु रंडो राज रू येर वाच्या मु रंडो राज रू येर वाच्या मु मधित्या वचन मधित्या वचन यस यहोवा माटा आलकिंस मु यहोवा सेलिब्रेशन देमनगा रेपू ये वालकु सम्रोह दार मंदु पिंडीयो अम्मा वड़नु तरवत रंडो वचन गुड़ चादवानी यस तरवत तेरी पद्धति में वचन रेपू ये वालकु गुटबैट कोणिकल गुटिंस वचन माटे अंतिन रेपू रेप मा येरोज गादू रेपू ये वालकु रूपा ओके इंटीकी दाविश रेड्डू एलिशा चेपिनाटलू माटे दी रेपू ये वालकी अद्भुत जरूरत तुम्ही वक रूपा सन्न पिंडा मु बढ़तुम्ही अंचिपड़ अलगे अलग जारी है अलग जारी है चुश्ता आदिपति नमले पर नू कन्नल रच चुच्चिदुगानी नू तेल कुंदु वंचिपड़ अकरे सच पर मधित राज रू पद्धति वच्या मोड़ अद्भुत चुरंडी मधित राज रू पद्धति वच्या मधित राज रू पद्धति वच्या मधित राज रू पद्धति में वच्या मु 43 44 वचन नी वो पाइक पे ये समुद्र को वाइपु कुड़नगा वाड़ू नरक इतनी पारा चुची ये भी कन्वर्ट लेदू अदर इनका येर मांडो कोई चूड़ू बन चिप्पनो येर मांडो रखते चुची अदिगो मनुष्य चैयन का चिन्ह मैगम नी वो हाहा बयाम टक्कर कोई नी वो वेलपन वक्ष मिलना आपको नेट तो ये रगम ने सिद्ध पर्स प्रिमेन सहोदर सहोदरी एलिया कर्मेनु परोतंपाई चेंज नेट 20 प्राधना मधित सारी प्राधन चार ये भी जवाब राले रंडो सारी मोड़ो सारी नालगो सारी आयोज सारी आरो सारी ये भी जवाब राले अको सारी ये भी जवाब रात आई नु वरना देवड़ा प्राधन विन्नाडो ने 20 डे विश्वास नू यंत प्राधन जस्ना ये नी दिनाल प्राधन जस्ना इंतो उपस्थित प्राधन जस्ना गुड़ा नीक कान ये मी कान बड़द आई तो क समय मोचना बड़ू नीक कन्वर्ट तुम्ही येरो सारी प्राधन जस्ना बड़ू एलिया विश्वास ने पॉकेट कोले अतर निरीक्षण कलिगुंड वारे इस सर मला वेल चूड़ू एंटे अपु चिपड़ आई गरो ए लिटिल लिटिल क्लाउड लिटिल क्लाउड डेट अराइज आउट ऑफ डी सी समुद्र में दुनि मनुष्य चयन तो मैगम पाइक ओस्तुम्ही डी से लिटिल क्लाउड आदि चिन्ह मैगम पैदा मैगम बाइबल चप्पुनी मो पे नवान कुरसे नु एनी दिनालो एलिया प्राधन चेस्ट वच्चा डू एनी दिनालो अमा एनी दिनालो बाइबल चप्पड़ी निकाद अतर दो मूड़ना संस्मर्मल प्राधन चेगा आकाश वर्ष में बुले अतर मला प्राधन चेगा आकाश वर्ष में चेनु माटे कुन्ना मी तेल्स कदा यकूप रसन पत्रिकलो उन्तुन आयोज साइंपली एड पद्धति वचन लो अतर मूड़ना संस्मर्मल वकड़े इपु मां इंतो मंदु उन्तुना अमा प्राधना मीटिंग की राने रमस्ला प्राधन से डानी कम समय मो उन्नु असर प्राधन चेलन 20 आसिक तेले मौकरिंस टानी का स्लिस्ट बड़ा मारी प्रभु कार्य मु रु प्रभु अद्भुत मु लु यला जरूरत एन कुन्ना वी वी वांट तू सी ए मेरिकल फ्रॉम डी लॉर्ड प्रभु निशोक अद्भुत जरिगालन कोरकुन्ना वगैनी आप बुतम कोरकु नेनु प्रभु समय में निमित्त माय वेच उन्हें तू नेनु भारम कलिगी विश्वासम तो प्राधन चेस्ट आलू अन्य मनुष्य मनम कलिगुंड तमन्न सी अधि एलिया प्राधन जस्ना बड़ू आकाश में रंची अग्नि गुरसीन आकाश में रंची अग्नि गुरसीन अधि एलिया प्राधन जस्ना बड़ू वर्ष गुरसीन पवर इस डी हैंड ऑफ ए बिलीवर पवर एकड़ो लेद भाभू पवर एकड़ो नी उच्च ग्रेचन इन आफरी केलन अपड़ू अकड़ा बाइंकर वेरी 20 एंड ने 48 तू 50 डिग्री सेंटीग्रेट नाक सादा कस्टम आई पे इन्ही 42 की 41 के माना अधिर्भोतना 41 इंच आवे एंटे सारा कस्ट रोड में दा ये रंडु कालता वेलुनी सोल्ड अंत एंडा ए चाहिए युर साहिंग जस्ता चप्पन युर साहिंग जस्ता युर साहिंग जस्ता युर ले सृष्टि अंत गुड़ा देवनी आध्यानम लो नी रात्रि निद्रपट्टे लेद विपरीत वे स्वेटिंग स्वेटिंग शॉट तड़च्पोत दी बनी दर्ज पोतस राई इक चाल इबंदी करंग उन्तु निद्रपट्टा निद्रपट्टन अपु मौकरिंची इंत एंड गा उन्हें प्रभा इंत एंड नु चल बर्च ले वा नी भूमि आकाश तन सुस्तिंचन देवड़ो आरण्यम ने बोसना ने पट्टी कलिगुंड देवड़ो बंदन उन्हें नील्लू अपु ओस्तु दी नोट लोन ची बाशा ए बाशा बाइबल बाश ओस्तु दपु इन्ही माटली इंतो मंदी सावुकुर तर ने विन्नाने इन्ही सारु ने बाइबल सावुत वचने नौ डी से लॉर्ड से गोल अधे देवड़ो मौर्प चंद्र ने 20 वाड़ू इ प्राधन अंगी करेंसी नी दास ने नाकु सहायन चेले वा वक रोज प्राधन जिससे रंडो रोज प्राधन जिससे मोड़ रोज नाक मेल को अच्छन मजदूर आत्म मूड़ना रहा टाइम की बाइंकर में 20 वर्ष बाइंकर में ना वर्ष असल वर्ष ने की पिल्ले लु बाय पड़ता और उर्मल सब दान की अदबकी वार रोज सलवारी चार यूनिवर्सिटी वार रोज लु अरे इंतिक चार तरव चुपता अकन नील्लू एंगो वाबड़ी गैलो नील्लू से अलग उन्टा इक्कल इक्कल दीवी दीवोता नेक्स्ट रोज के दीवोता अकड़ देगो अब डेंजर पिल्ले लेटल ओस्ता कॉलेज के अवर राड अन्नील नी एंड का अभिलेख बोल अभिलेख तो अपु ले क्लासेस मदल आते देवनी स्तोत्रम पैदवानी नन कनिकरिंची इंत्पत्त वर्ष गुरपिंच नी कोणनाल एलिया देवड़ो ना देवड़ो एलिया देवड़ो गोद ऑफ इलाइजा इस माय गोद एवं टुडे वक अद्भुत चेस्ट डम वक अच्छे रिकर में कार्य प्रभु चयनी जीवतम लो नी प्रतिकलन वक साक्षम वाली एंटे ये आयन समय मु कोरकु नु वेच उन्हें आई ने वेलमन छोटी के वेल्ड आई ने वेलमन छोट उन्डो आई ने चेमन छोट चाहिए यंत कालो वो गवन रु वो प्रीवेट एमसीए जैसा एमसीए मास्टर ऑफ कंप्यूटर एप्लीकेशन सुन्ता जैसी अंकु तकू जीत मिसना रंकु एंटी वनी वरा तकू जीत में वरा इस तीव्र ने नु अकड़ी पंचे अकंची कदला दु यू वर्क फॉर सम मोर ईयर्स लेट इस सी एंड वेट ओवर गोद लीड्स यू अतन मंच सिंगर मंच म्यूजिशियन मंच ट्रांसलेटर मंच प्रेचर मल्टी टैलेंटेड बॉय अंकु माय फ्रेंड्स दे आर एनिंग मोर दें 40 आई एम गेटिंग लेस दें 10 व्हाट इस दिस अंकुल अदंतेर अलग उन्तु दी कनी लेस दें 10 अन्नो नी लेस दें 100 उन्नोल गुड़ उन्तर वो अन्नी पटिंस को दो डोंट कंपेयर इन्हें चपने नो कंपैरिजन अन्ने अवर तो बोल सको देर इस डी टाइम इन योर लाइफ डी लॉर्ड विल एक्सोल्ड यू देवन ने नु गनपर स्टार इन्हें चपने ही डेट वेटेट ऑन डी मास्टर शाल बी ओनर्ड यश्मान ने यश्मान ने कोरके एधुर चुच्च वाड़ी घनतन उन्नु अलग वो तरतनो कार संस्था पंजे स्टोचा इबंदी पड़तुने पंजे स्टोचा अतर वात टेक महेंद्र अन्नीची अतन को कैंटर यू कॉल अस अप्लाई जस्ते इंटरव्यू अच्छन अंकु चला गो एंटे यस यू कैन गो यू में गेट इट डी जॉब नी कदी वक्ष आकाश तन पश्चकल ना नाई नो यू कैन गो फॉर इंटरव्यू डोंट वायरी यू प्रेयर गो लॉर्ड विल टेक केयर आफ एंड दें लेटर यू वास सिलेक्टेड फॉर टेक महेंद्र युप्ला तन पोजीशन एंटर देसा टॉप मस्ट पोजीशन इन टेक महेंद्र मूनल अमेरिका बंबिस्तर मूनल कनाडा बंबिस्तर मूनल लो हास्टेली बंबिस्तर और ने सिंगापुर बंबिस्तर अन्य देश आलो कंपनी ने दुबे संदे कंपनी बुद्धि लेदा तिलु लेदा पर्सन अंकु इंत गा इंत गा प्रभु नानु इंत गा हेचिस्ता डू अन्न को लेद अंकु लेंटे आदेर अद्भुत मने दी नु अनुको ने नुको लाइफ इस फुल ऑफ अनेक्सपेक्टेड थिंग्स विच ब्रिंग्स इन तू योर लाइफ अनुको ने नी अद्भुत देव चेस्ट वस्ता वेट फॉर डी टाइम वेट फॉर डी टाइम देवन समय मु कोर येरी गुड़ नीको नस्टन कालगद येरो ने नस्टन चेले नु नु कंसम आरस में इसे बाइबल लोक माटुनी नाक चाल माटु गुट तोस ने मध्य टनी स्थिति को दिग्गा उन्हें नु तोदकु नीव ये माटले कार्तार तेरिया तोदकु शिवर लो नु वलंदन ने मिंच नु पाइन उन्टा अलंदन ने मिंच पाइन उन्टा मध्य ता नी वेलकुन वालंद्र मुंडु उन्तर शिवर लो नु वाल मुंडु वाल पाइन उन्टा इधि देव चेस्ट अका अद्भुत माने ने दो स्टोरी चप्पट लेद इधि जरूरत ने नालो गुड़ जारी है इन्ही गुड़ इधि तोदकु वक रेपू अन्न माटा गुटिंस रेपू रेपू यहोश्वर तो गुड़ देवड़ा देच तार यंजप्त रेपू मी मच अद्भुत मुल से यदि गणिक मेरू मेमन मेरू शुद्ध पर्स को रेपू चुश्ता रमाटा चुमारो इवि पात्र ने बंदन लेंगे चाल उन्हें येर समुद्र दिस कोंडी बंदन ने नीर दिस कोंडी चाल उन्हें आई ती कथनी बंदन लो कर तू मेरिकल्स मी अंदर की तेल्सीन दे नीति ने द्राक्षरसंगा देवड़ो मार्च एंड मार्च डले लाते द्राक्षरसंग नीति का मार्च देवड़ी एदन चाहिए गल्ड भाभू वाइस वर्ष अंतर चुश्ता आदि टू डे टू एदन चाहिए गल्ड एदन चाहिए गल्ड अकड़ा मरिया चेप्ना प्रेस प्रभु चेप्पन माटा ना समय मिंकनु अधि आयन समय मोचना बड़ू आयन समय मोचना बड़ू अद्भुत में 20 अच्छे रिकार्ड नो सुगर इस एडेड नो ग्रेप्स आर रिक्वायर्ड द्राक्ष पंडल लास्ट रोल नाक पे इन्ही सुगर वो अवसर में राहेद नो प्रिपरेशन नो एस्टीमेशन नो मणि डब्बो अवसर में लेद ये अवसर लेकुना सामान्य में 20 नीति ने एस प्रभु द्राक्षरसंग मधुरंगा मार्च मध्य ता वार पोसिंग द्राक्षरसंग कंटे इधि इनका बाग उन्हें निवक अंदर ताकिन वार साक्षम इच्छा वक अद्भुत एप्पु जारी है इन्ही आयन समय मंदु मानो नेट्स को सिंधी माने पिल्ले लेकिन नेट पिंस वासी नीति नु बोलिंस वासी नीति देर इस डी टाइम फॉर एवरीथिंग प्रति दान की ओक समय मु कल दु बाइबल लोक माटुनी प्रसंग ग्रंधम लो गोद है मेड एवरीथिंग ब्यूटीफुल इन इस ओवर टाइम देवड़ो समस्त अनोतन समय मंदु चक्कर चेनु पे ये देनी सर चक्कर चेस्ट तंदर बड़द इधि नालगो अद्भुत नोटनी बंदन प्रकारण दिस कुंटा आयोज दी में अंदर की तेल्स लाजर विश्व में लाजर की अनार्गुम अच्छना बड़ू मार्तम मरे चिपड़ कदा चेप्पन अपु एस प्रभु तरगा वच्चा डा अलसिंग वच्चा आलसी ना डू इन्हें जारी है नी आई ने चनपयाड़ दु समाधि एस डे एप्पु वच्चा डे एस प्रभु नालगो दिन मुल इंतरवाता बाइबल उन्हें कदा ये नालगो दिनाल एंड गालसिंग वच्चा डू वक दिन में इंतरवात रावच कदा मेंटने परिगत कुन रावच कदा न्यू प्रेमिंस लाजर रु सिक्का युनाड़ अनार्गुम तोनाड़ तरिगर आए एस प्रभु वां जप्ते अन्य मु निधान गोच्चा आलसी महिना कुदा वक अद्भुत में एंटर देसा मृत्यु महिना परिस्थिति ने आई ने प्रतिकिंस गल्ड आई ने चाहिए गल्ड जीव मु पुनरुद्धान मु ने नी मरलंड अपु रु प्रतिवारी इस्तुबरता रुकद अन्ना जीवतम लो ना बॉडी लो ना फैमिली लो अका अद्भुत प्रभु चयनी प्रभु एक आस्तम ममन कदरिंस आन कुंटा प्रभु एंक कदरिंस इन्हें देसा नु आज समय मु कोरकु वेच उन्नट ले नु तंदर बढ़तुना असल अका विश्वास में नीको नाक नीको नाक कन्वर्ट लेद ये अद्भुत चेस्ना देवड़ो तन समय मंदु तन महिमा कोरकु चेस्ट डे गानी वक मनुष्य मेपु कोरकु मनुष्य गणत कोरकु चेड बाइबल इन्ही इन्ही ने चुरंडी पक्ष वायुगल वांट इस को अच्छना एस प्रभु मोट्टम अदर चेप्पन माटे अंति निकुम ना कुमार डानी पापुम लो चुश्ता आत्मा संबंध में 20 माट जिपड़ आत्मवता नु लेच परिपत्ति अंदर अच्छे रिपया कबटी अद्भुत मु चेसे 20 वार नी जीवतम लो मन जीवतम लो देवड़ो राबो येरोज लो वक अद्भुत मु चयनी एनु अनुकुंडे गणिक आई ने समय मु गुटिंस सारी आई ने समय मु गुटिंस सारी अला वेच उन्हें 20 वारु कुन्नी नीमालनु पार्टी स्थान कुन्नी नीमाल गुड़ उन्टा अमा इब्रू काफीस लो पंजे सिद्ध अब नीमनी बंदन उन्ते उन्दा उन्ते मरलंड अपु रु वक ऑर्गेनाइजेशन लोन नीमनी बंदन उन्ते दाविक में 20 विधानम लो देवड़ो निमाइंस 20 कुन्नी नीमाल गुड़ उन्ते कदा कुन्नी कंडीशंस कुन्नी शरदर गुड़ उन्ते कदा ये इतवी चुरंडी मोट्टम अदर Yeah, it, ah, we, churandi, motthamad, tiga. Eho, shiva, grandam, mu, mudavachai, mu, ah, the, vachnum. The conditions to fulfill the Lord in order to do a miracle. Eho, shiva, grandam, mu, mudavachai. Mudavachai, mu, ah, the, vachnum. Sal, ma, adbutum, chayali, and, kunte, ah, vekti, parishuddham, jyutani, kalygundan. Parishuddham, jyutang, kalygundan. Apavitritta, they would, istubad, ah, do. Poudi, poudi, ah, chadun, ndi, veli, poudi. Apavitram, eh, daanani, deeni, mucha, kodi. Prabhu, nee, premin, chevadu, Prabhu, kor, gubhatkal, unkri, eh, viswasm, eh, saray. Prabhu, same, em, kor, edhuruchu, chat, went, va, tan, tan, prachik, vachkuntad. Bible, cheppari, the, eh. Me, ru, war, eh, maj, chun, di, by, no, vedali, prachik, um, goundi, Bible, cheppari, the, eh. Come out from among them and be separate. Separate. Prachik, it, they would, kor, ta, reepu, me, maj, lo, adbutum, change, ganika, me, mon, eh, parishuddha, vachkunti. Esu, raktam, ei, roso, kuda, andu, vattlo, ondi, prati, roso, prati, kshanam. Ah, raktam, khadu, daru, dhara, na, 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 pavitru, vachkuntanu, na, na, paravitru, vachkots. Ei, roso, ki, Esu, chinni, chinni, raktam, nekku, nakku, andu, vattlo, ondi. Manalanta, pudu, manu, parishuddha, gundan, kada. Apavitru, vachkustan, ki, no, okay, so, push kalanga, onai, baita. Nu, chuset, went, mobile, darani, nu, push kalanga, apavitru, vachkupadots. Parishuddham, jyutam. They would, parishuddhu, ah, the, guttibet, kala, manu. Neen, parishuddhu, nee, ganika, me, ru, parishuddhu, goundi. Ekali, ekali, compromise, eh, eh, ledu. Sadupad, just, kuni, eh, eh, ledu. Let us live a holy life so that the Lord may do a miracle in your life, in my life, at his own time, ah, in, same, em, ondu, and, chesstad. Reda, the. Reda, churandi, muppay, edava, keethana. Eruvin, algu, vachnum, Psalm thirty seven, verse twenty four. Psalm thirty seven, verse twenty four. Sorry, inga, kavach, no, chadukunna, eh. Yes, chemin, sandi, muppay, nalgu, vachnum. Thirty four, thirty four, of same chapter, same Psalm, thirty seven. Yeho, akor, kani, peti, kun, eh, andam, oh. Ah, in, mark, man, surin, sumo. Boh mini, swatantrin, chukun, ah, tu. Ah, in, in, eh, chinsu, ah, in, mark, man, surin, sumo. Primena, saodara, saodara, Prabhu, okay, adbut, kari, um, chayalan, kun, pudu, manu, ah, in, mark, um, roundan. Manu, andriki, tellis, Esu, neen, eh, mark, um. Ah, mark, eh, eh, di. Ah, mark, eh, eh, di. Eh, yudalu, cherrapatti, badin, tharvata. Ah, migil, uh, nah, kodimandi, yudalu. Ah, pravak, then, irmia, thakir, gotsi, oh, maat, adutar, yeah, to, maat, there, sa. Me, me, anto, mandu, devaru, um, soo, eh, anto, mandai, phayam. Ito, vaky, di. Me, me, nadavalsin, mark, um. Me, me, chavalsin, panini, nee, they would, eh, ho, ah, ma, telijay, eh, ba, ka. New, eh, me, they would, eh, the, chepte, me, ah, they, ventamu, alage, onta, mu. They, Jesse, they would, eh, chaptad, uh, delisku, nee, ma, chepponi, irmia, thon, tar. Nala, fair, ando, vachai, lo, me, chola, chi, maata. Nala, fair, ando, vachai, lo. Huh, Ito, irmia, and, tu, saray, okay, all right, me, vinapum, ba, ondi. Nakku, istum, eh, di, neen, Prabhu, deri, velli, prathan, chesstad, ah, na. Prathan, chesstu, vashad. Churandi, ah, the, vachnum, eh, the, vachnum, chavata. Ah, Book of Jeremiah, chapter forty two. Forty two, verse seven. Huh, ma, sa. Sa, sa, lu. Padid, dinamula, in, tharvata, adino, just, kondi. Eh, nalugu, roso, line, tharvata, by, no, vachkuts, kada. Padid, dinamula, in, tharvata, see, there is a time. Padid, dinamalu, irmia, prathan, chesstu, vachad, Prabha, me, prasline, varki, neen, eh, jawab, chappali, var, ochad, eh, gharu. Neen, chaptad, and, cheppari, nu, na, ke, eh, bana, chaptad, neen, var, chaptad. Nu, chappak, podo, neen, eh, chaptad, var, di, prasul, kada, ah, na, adukutu, vashad, padid, dinamula, in, tharvata. Aplu, irmia, varki, jawab, isstad, neen, ik, talam, pev, enti. You and I should walk in the way of the Lord, David, mark, um, lo, nadavali. Ah, David, mark, eh, Bible, nekku, nakku, bodis, the. Nu, nadavalsin, Bible, look, maatundee, kada, Psalm thirty two eight. I will instruct thee and teach thee the way in which you should go and I will guide thee with my eye. Nekku, upadesham, chesstidnu, nu, nadavalsin, mark, um, nekku, boedin, chednu. Ni, me, the, kanadrisi, vinci, ni, me, the, drischi, vinci, nekku, aloch, cheppari, the, nu. It is thirty two eight, Psalm, I C R forty eight seventeen. Nekku, preyosin, kalunatlu, nee, they would, eh, ho, ah, lo, neen, eh, nekku, upadesham, chesstidnu. Yant, chakka, maat, enti, na, they would, eh, upadesham, chesstad. Neu, neen, eh, nekku, upadesham, chesstidnu, neu, nadavalsin, trova, nu, neen, na, ripinsu, the, nu. Yeho, ah, nich, mu, neen, nu, na, nich, mu, the Lord shall guide thee continually. Resto, jyutam, yant, aasidva, dharma, jyutamo, anta. Atma, sammanam, jyutam. Idi, Prabhu, to, mudipad, undi, jyutam. Vekti, kathanga, evuru, tamantad, tam, eh, the, chela, eh, the, chesna, the, anta, gudan, suna. Suna, it comes to zero. Evresun, chappnavali, chesstai, it comes to big zero. But, if anything, any man, do something, something with the will of God. David, chit, ansarang, chesstai, that will work. And, kune, kodimandi, idhurtu, sangan, praram, ish, saru, dani, arnel, tharvata, eroi, just, sad. Atirvata, sanshur, nah, rain, tharvata, ah, the, abhimanda, vatar. Atirvata, dani, anavai, just, sad. Asli, eh, pudi, anto, mandu, praram, chedena. Sa, lu. One, mandu, praram, yesi, drain, all, gudan, na. Lord, if you bless my work, I will work for you. Nu, na, nu, nee, nu, panini, divis, eh, neen, panj, chesstad. Nu, divin, chappati, neen, panj, ches, uh, the. Eh, upeg, ledu, yarachi, waste. Andi, rathrantha, prayas, but, eh, endu, kuchindi, happy, ka, padukunti, ba, ontu, kada. We must be in the way of the Lord. Ah, mark, um, ah, the, Bible, tharam, guttinsad. Ah, to, velu, ah, na, pudu, alage, vela. Ah, when, eh, Prabhu, first, inga, chaptu, vashad, eh, wait, eh, neetini, guda, manu, nem, ah, nem, ah, ki, exercise, chayali. Okay, roso, okay, ratri, ever, ki, now, exercise, chayali, ma, exercise, chal, the, there, sa, kada, abyasam, chayali. Mudavu, mudavu, sharutu, eh, the, sa, ma, akkara, Prabhu, chaptunadu, eruvay, ah, the, keethana, eruvay, agut, vachnum. Eruvay, ah, the, keethana. Brother, vakramshumaga, ningkamim bai budharamale, papal diputunam. Hmm, ma tharatharagutipalamma, meetipatleddan, neenugulalasinchesna. Hmm, yeruvayidavu, uchadhandi. Neekorukunenu kanipetitsunannu. Adharthathayyo. Andi? Idhoshathamunu. Chushara, adhartha, adhartha, ma entapramakimendo. Yoho, karuk kanipetikunaitwantu, var edharthengunta. Varu yedaithe, denkorukaithe kanipetaranukunnaroo, aavishimuloo, adharthengunta. Prabhanavasiddi, nakunna panidi, nakunna assignmentsidi, naamunduna halochididi, nuvayen chopthavu. Edharthenganuunta. Var edharthengane jivistar. Enni maatullevu, bai bulle edharthidunugurinchii. Adharthavantula pradhana aynaku, anandakarmu. Adharthavantuluku aynathodiga undanu. Adharthavantulu, aynamokadarshinamu chayiduru. Adharthavantulubalabarchiduke, yoho, kanadrisi, lokamantita, sancharam chesunadi, adharthavantuluku chikatilo. Velugukuchidu. Chusari, enni maatulnay. Adharthidutukooden jivitanikali gunthar. First valu parishuddhengundaniki istubartar. Rendavi, dayu markhamlo undaniki istubartar. Muddavi, adharthengavundaniki, var istubartar. Nalgovchurandi, yeruvayaidokaitrana, padhalvochunam. Psalm twenty-seven verse fourteen. Yoho, karuk kanipetikuninnumu. Unsukunnumu. Dhairingu donnali, courage. Endukudeshadhaiyu, okavalaalismanunko. Angurayantaru, idu, chudu, idu, chudila jarigindi, ani, man chutru maatade viswastre chalamundanu. Helen cheshta. Ma, alismayindichudu. Eh, endukaya? Hmm? Ani maatadevalundanu. Alissimautunapudae, alissimautunapudae, manu dhairingavundanu. Dhairingavundanu. Issa ku, pelijesukunapudu viceenta, bai bul chopthundene, alavaisamusral. Issa ku, kimmattamadati twins, kavalepilaliputinaburu, issa ku viceenta, arvaisamusral. Arvailonchina alavaidi cheshte, twenty years he waited patiently. Irosulubalabusral, gudvetchundu. Gollgoll jasnar. Am paddukodu, andarni paddukoni vudu. Hmm? Vetchundan, maatikasra, adhuvayetelidu. Primansahodrasahodri. Dhairimko, dhairimto kurne jivithunguda, ivetchunaitwantu var kavastru. Ettai mostundu, prabhu cheshtadu, prabhu cheshtadu. Okay, na sangathoditchipattan, potenentpotan. Neen prabhu korik edurchudanukunnan, meenendukantavariavatar. Meesangathamichuskonan chopthadu. Dhairingavunta. Dhairingavuntu, pravichinuparicharinukunsa gistountadu. Ekkaadavu, ayyipadasla, ekkaadavu, venikittaggeideladasla. Prabhu koruku, athrinkunu baringali pradhincheshtu mundigalipotadu. Dhairingavunta. Indukusharathu, indukusharathuchurandi. Romiel Rasin Patrika, yeruvayaidavachay. Romiel Rasin Patrika, yeruvayaidavachay. Emidavachaymu, yeruvayaidavatsunam. Romans chapter eight, verse twenty-five. Yeruvayaidavavatsunam. Hmm? Hmm? Chushara? Amma, opika. Opika undanu. Prakavilapavakhyamulu muddavachay, yeruvayaro vatsunam. Vilapavakhyamulu muddavachay, yeruvayaro vatsunam. Opika, Englishlo patienceanantari gada. Opika undanu babu, opika undanu. Devuni kariyalu, adbutunga zarugitaniki, chakkaga zarugitaniki, nee jivithum chakkaga nadavutaniki, nuv atmenga vurdi chendutaniki, opika anedimannuka avastarun, patience. Chalamundiyopikilake, chalamatiki nastapodanikarunu. Chalamundibhadapattanikarunu, yopikilake. Tondur, tondur padtar. Nu pradhincheni, neli potanantan, manu vayen cheshta, yendukelthavu, ekriyelthavu, enjeshta. Aladidu thirigedanikantin, lo, ni pradhincheshte, prabhu nin chakkaganadipistadu gada. Kuchumaagu, neek yediprabhu ninayinchadu, neek ekirvostadu gada. Adi yentapivodu gada. Primansahodrasahodri. Opika kaliyavandavasindi, parishuddhengavundanu. Dayu kumaynumarkhamlo undanu. Muddavi, chapandi. Edharthuthavundanu, nalvadi. Ma dhairingavundanu, ayidavu, purjuushanga, deenthadi? Opika undanu, arvachurandi. Amma, notamuppayokaitrana, ayidavatsunam. Notamuppayokaitrana, Psalm one hundred and thirty. Hmm? Hmm? Aynamata meedanu, nashpetikuninna, chushara. Andukune, idhurchu chetwantu variki, devu doku maatistha. Andriki vudu. Andru maatavenna, andru maatsadina, prabhu kodmandike amatistha. Andukune, mariyeyenchipindi, paricharekulunchuchii. Aynamithochipinadi? Jadi, yenchopthadu, idi importantandi. I Christo jivithuloo, ati pramukhumay devu tente, bhaujirigadu. Asal prabhu yen chopthadu, yen chaimanchopthunadu, yakri galaman chopthunadu. What my Lord says unto me? Oh Lord, what do you want to say unto me? You show me very clearly. You speak to me, give me thy word. I will do accordingly, aavidangalanen cheshta. Nu onamantavuntanu, velipamantavelipotanu, na kavasturundi, edidu guda. Ammaatundey, ammaatisthat. On sandrapumlo, neenavachotpanchistunapudu, prabhu, prabhaniyarphati eviti. Ante, padda, urkne, prabhu kutilinattu explanationemi vakaladu. What is thy plan, what do you want me to do? Nuvayen chaimantinavu, nyarphati eviti, adhunax fastingajapu, odhivade pradhana, majanade pradhana, rahtreyade pradhana. Malivodhivade pradhana, majanade pradhana, rahtreyade pradhana. Naakutelsinvarukudichepidide, you remember me in your prayers. And the Lord should guide me, and the Lord should give me a word. Okmaataprabhival, ammaatena kavalepuda, ammaatikorukunene idhurchuusna. Ammaatikorukaribedhurana. Prabhanamundingakaknaluganelu time undi, naluganelu lo, veprichnaparle. Try to give me as early as possible. Prabhu ketersu, yedri var. Vakarosadbutunga, okmaatischa, eyundante, ralosamusruna, megamupaigettabadenu, Israelu prayanamchaysagire, namatochidu. Elavochidanukunnaru, daily chavthangada babu, bai bul. Ah, daily portiononni, prabhu maatardhat. Yepreethadochidu, ralosamusrum, megamupaigettabadindi. Megamupaigettabadinaburu, megamkadutundi, Israelu prayanamchaysinaru. Kabatni, ralosamusrum, muigane, nuv ikanninchiprayanamavali, adi na prabhu upadesinchesindi. Ah, velugumannikavali. Ah, dayu kumayn, avagahana, atmadharamanukali gunthadu. Mentinenen valujichepanu. Yenchepandeshama, as soon as I finish all my academic assignments, please try to relieve me. Nanu virudhavachayin, leedu, meeviridhavani, veeridhavana. Balavare, neenekarunupodanikraladu, neenu. Edhurunusamusral, vuchanu, panimuginchanu, nensayiliginantachesisana. Igenensayiligade, hemlaidu, na have my own commitments and assignments, that I should go back. Please relieve me, please stay back. Please relieve me, manishmaatavinnala, devanmaatavinnala, chapandi. Ikandar devanmaatanta, baitikeltidelustadi. Baitikiroodimidigelte, athsaurastakelte, apuddelustadi. Saurastantadeshada? Junctionantaa, hukkada, hmm? Nalu roadlu, hmm, junction, adi thandasauras, Hyderabad baad. Baita, ma. Wherever you be there, dear friend, vekru nasare. Neekavalsindena, kavalsindogutidhugutidh, adi prabhu maata. I left the job and came back, wholeheartedly, I left the job. Nakujogame, pramakimendikadu, na prabhuve, nakoruk, pranumbetinakoruku, chani payisamachibadi thirigilechindu prabhu, aynikoruku, aynichadu, aynemmanadu thirigichesamanteh. Aynichesthingkoti, vadaantechalichadu. Amma, isthat, aynichavade, manu tiskunivadame. Aynamata. Nee jivithumantatlu, savcharanukunaitwantu, yavrenesere, bajidigala sahodaru. Nee vishimulogani, savishimulogani, kutumavischadugani, mari, ujjogasammanisinvischadugani, ye vishimunesere. What is my Lord's word? Prabhu ekamata eviti. Ikkanu, ammaatikoruku edurchuudanu, tondurpadadu. Tondurpadadu. Andi? Neenu, na venikochse yavunastunni nadipinsal. Na venikochse yavunastulkimadrikaranugundanu. Variki sareena olochinchedhavu. Adanukul, adanu jousundadu gada? Adousundadu gada? Uncle, idi vishimulayenti, neeneyalali, neeneyalali, neeneyalali. Yes. Primansahodrasahodri. Ammaata, manu kaligunthadu. Prabha, yamatischa gada? Ammaatikorik edurchuustrannu, prabha, nuv eppudu ammaatenu, nerveristanantaa, apudinerveshu. Neenantavarku vetchundanu. Nu vedana, istecheshta, naapadikuchamantikuchundanu, esprabuschili chapandi gada. Agirikelkucholantanta, yedisaru. Kuchunadu eda? Ante mari, neenu adijastha. Leelaidu, nuunsovali, anantenuunshundanu. Manuunshundae, ekadunsovali, akad gelli, yenchepali, yenmaatadali, kadalmaatadte kudurdu. I don't want to tell stories, I don't want to make you laugh. Iman lavinsraniki, kavinshraniki, edhokadalchaplanikakalega. Yavureklikinavandu, aslelal. Avasurum hemlaidu. Devuni koruku, devu maatikoruku, sareenidu, vidhanamlo, nelavadutadu, edhurchuushutadu, adi chalavasurum. Edhavachurandi, Psalm one hundred and twenty-three, verse two. Psalm one hundred and twenty-three. Dasulukannalu, thamejjumanuni chethitathanu. Chuchinatlu. Karaninsvaruku. Manukannalu karaninsvaruku, edhurchuuchetta. I kavalevaruntadu gada, watchman, kavalevar, denkorukanputadama? Odhimkoruku, kavalevaru, odhimkoruku kanipetinatlu, neenu, nee edhutaa, aashutokanipetitsunannu, nanantadu. Kanikiram. Edhunin manshodinu, manshodanu, manshodanukadu. Devune kanikiram darani, krupa darani, manshodanu darani, devu man pakshingasahayincheshta. Ye karimkorukayedurchuusnamu, amma? Aynakani karam, mercy, is a merciful God, and he shows mercy upon everybody who waits for him. Tanakorik, yavur edhurchuusnaroo, yavur kanipetinavu, varandarimidani kanikaramuntadi. Aralantapudu, prabhu kariyalu adbutunga zarigali ankunti. Prabhu kariyalu adbutunga zarigalanti. Devuni atma cheshtani, nadipinsibadale ankunti, neevu nee edhurchuudasina, avasiddavundigada? Yanduru, atma cheshtanadipimpabaduduru, varandaru. Yes. Chapdhaniki, vinadaniki, atma cheshtanadipinsibadetaniki, thadavundhi. The Lord should guide me by his spirit. Tanatmadhara prabhu nanadipinsal. Amma? Parishuddhman jivithumavasurum, utubedigandhi. Parishuddhman jivithum, chalavasurum, rendavi? Rendavi eviti, andi? Dayu markhamlo undanu, yesu samrayamarkhamnavelnenu. Amarkanendukeladu. Indukomarkunavalladshada. Markhamlo unduta. Elias rantadu, issa ku bari vishmaikanipet, velnapudu. Chakkati markhamandu, devu du nanu nadipinsinu, chakkati markham. Sareen markhamantadu. Balinadipinshadu, devu nanu nanantadu. Chushara? Hmm? Sareen markhamlo, ninunadipinsanu, nanunadipinsanu. Anadipinschandwarakas, gummandat baitikelledhiledasla. Gummandat baitikelledhile. Prabhu nadipinschandwaruku. Prabhu sahayincheshandwaruku. Primansahodrasahodri. Vishyam chinnadena, pettadena, that is secondary. My Lord is able to do everything for me. Yedena, na pakshingachaygalu. Amma, this is the real Christian faith. Idi nisman Christo jivithum, edo, bhaktitoti, edo, matsammanangayedo, alagala payipenjivinchad, jivithmekadu. No glory unto the Lord, devuni kee mahimradu. Devuni kee mahimradu. Devuni mahimarthamay, devu kariyalu prasalamachal jarigali. Prasaluchudali, prabhu marumanshupandali, marumanshupandinavu, atmengedigadu. Idi konchun, shramato, vopikito, pradhantoto, viswastinto, prabhu prasalamachal jarigaitwantu, dayu kumayna, atmakari madu. Atchikariyum jarigali ante, dayu markhamlo undanu. Muddavi, adharthutukjudjivitham, devu edathundudu. Andi, don't, God doesn't like people who are hypocrites. Besudanasalakchadu. Lobdotti, baitotti, akrootti, ikrootti, akadram, ikadrama. Endukuchindi? Adharthavantulunani balabaristadu, nalvadi? Amma, dhairinu, hmm, alismayindisare, alismayindisare, alismayindisare. Anna kumrinsnatli, hurdayan devu sanidu lo, kumrinsranikneshkho. I barman pradhinokeshtar radu. Andi, neenendukochtrannanti, venninu, pradhistune, pradhinetskhoadu, adi. Idenanteh, pradhistune, yenetskhoali? Pradhinetskhoadu. Pradhistune, pradhinetskunaitwantu varugundanu, tarvata idavu? Opika, ma, opika undanu, tondurpadadunana. Padhipadhi yavunastulkine chepidide, ida oktahasarika, pramato chepid. Tondurpadadu babu, tondurpadadu, nee ujjogame ekriyibodu. Nee bharayekriyibodu, akad, akad, am ekrundanavu, telskani, chappatle. Daichesna maatavinnu. Ayavunastarchi, ibalavuntai, vichitraina, prasinnasthar. Uncle, uncle, eh, entraanteh, uncle, mugurunna rankulana. Mugurunna rankul. Am mugurlu yavrunak, telitlada, uncleana. Muguru, muguri yavru born again anteh. Uncle, all three are born again, baptized and from Hebra. I language bagavastadu gada, pillalki. Mustavastadu language. Neanthal language upensnasal, neenatla cross questioncharu, magudeshu. All three are local or non-local? Anya, uncle, one non, one local and two non-local uncle. See, questions, answers. Now, what shall we do? Adyenkul, miren choptharant, anteni, yavun cheskumantan, cheskuntavan. Atlekada, uncleana, mariyantehana. Am mugurlu yavru, mirkunsun pradhincheni, uncle. Neenu pradhincheshtan, uncle. Manitrinkansipradhinchedham, uncle. I want the will of God, annadu. Good, ammaatibavundhi. Ammaatibavundhi, naak telsina. Malanadu, am mugurlu, akanikilisankulana. Enti, naak tilisa, aita ammaigurun chasal chappadu. Chal danger. Tilisinimala, repodunnu, vayantavu? Uncle, va papa idhruoguthe. Naananna antanu, hmm? Endukanteh, mari, bhaatsadukunavu gada, tilvitaatlikkuuntai, hmm? Either known or unknown, tilisna, tilipena. Muguru prabhu namukunaranchepavu, baptisundisukunaranchepavu, Hebronanchepavu, na kamatchar. Muguru vakite, pakshpatmemlaidu, pradhinchedha. Alame, pradhincheshtuvacham, vakar drop ayar, padihinrosulki. Malanu, varnrosulki, ingukodrop ayar. Uncle, akkare miglupayar, uncleana. Amera ni bharayababu, go and marry him, now they're happy. Amma yavudeshta, naak bagatilisina, amma. Alant maatlin, chappagordu, valchath, chepinsal. Apurrepodina, hmm? Valijopthadu. Appurichepanu, amma ik tandralayadu thesa. Amma yalintlu, pededidu thesa, yankal muguruku chellulunadu thesa. If you marry that girl, you should be, act like a son. Lu kodukulavunadu, naatramisavunukotarvata. Neenamundugaravasus, leelaidu, leelaidu, uncle, neenu kodukulavuntan, uncle. Uplalagavunnaadu, meetam mugurchelidu, pillidu, yesadu. Yes. Yankal chavalan, nanadipinshtu. Andi, prabhu maata, andi? Prabhu maata avasurum. Prabhu kanikiram, na kavali, ne kavali. Primansahodrasahodri. Ividinga, manu, itti, parishuddhaldvara, jagatka i Christo jivitanik, exercise cheshtu. Abhyasam cheshtu, konchukonchun, konchukonchun, netskuntu. Prabhu korik vetchuntu, prabhu ekakariyamuru. Manu chustu, ithalukuchupisru, ithalukichopthu, prabhu kana parchali, mahimparchali. Ala, prabhu manandarakiku guda, sahayipadali, kabati, amma? Ni samimkadu, na samimkadu. Yavur samimpramakimendi? Gatiyichepandama? Denkoruku, ye panikorukalisare. If you want to marry to your son or daughter, wait for the Lord's time. Okvalu, wait cheshtunanu, nu chapteh, prabhu neek edhochopthadu. Merukun vischalu, neen tarvat, malachopthanu, topic ikkutai poyindan, ankotle. Naak prabhu vichchakolidu, milantvarukpanchibattesuntan. Eh, so, manu, prabhu samimkorik edurchuushutmanchidu. Ala, prabhu, raboyidinalu, manu, abhyasam cheskuntuvosthe. Nu netskuntavu, ithalukinnetbistavu. Nu cheshtavu, ithalukchaimanchopthavu. Apdru, apdru, ah, valunnetskuntaru. Raboyrosuloo, iblu, kadvalai pootuntadu, viceperry pootuntidu, balantagipootuntidu. Yankun, yavunastun, yavur preparechastharu. Yes. Manu madrikaranugundanu. Ala, prabhu manuki sahayimu chainvaka, pradhincheskuntanu.
Pradhincheskunavandhi. Mamulandharani, ethmiclega preminchinama, paralokupthanri, marigusari. Mi padalagarkavatanki, mitshuppanukrupanubalti, mi konnanaalu. Mi samimkorukmaatrameme, mekanipetadu. Ma samimuloma, panulume, cheskogordu. Ma panulukevalu, mi samimulane chayali. Endukanteh, memu, meyakaraktunchata, kadagbannetwanti. Mechata, konabranetitvaalangankaka, ayaka, jivithumakavalanu, meemarigusari. Madhyankalpalamagbojinchini, maatalvattananaalu, kankaka, mahurayalabu, badrapatskani. Na thanri, aritiga munduki sagipagalakitanu, krupusipinsamani. With one, vaakyanbattu, onanajaliskuntu, yesa namunna. Pradhinchi, bettilar, veeekonsunam, thanri. Amen. Daicheshi gamaninsandhi. Ipudu, manu mandru, niluvaru, partpaadukuntamuntam. Ah, partpaaditapudu, ah, mundu sahodarili valtaru. Adharvathasaahodarili valtaru, ekanteh, tharfulu, manuki bojinalunay. Kabati, ah, aavidamirat, nearpart, jarugudde. Meru, okarundrimushalu, wait chesintarvata, partpaadtham. Partpaaditapudu, atlagam, manu mundukisagivalala. Randhi, daigali gana, ma thanri, marigusari, udai kalamnundipudu, arkumisani, maathavunchinandukku. Mi padalaki, bandanalu, stutulus, stotralu, chaliskuntu. Migilisamay mantakwada, meerimakuthodiga undanani. Pratisemamkoda, maaku, asvadakaranu, undedatluga. Meekhastamakuthodiga unsvalstindan, manavajestu. Pratekanga, mir vitinatranika vaakyum. Mahurayalapulunchi, shatrudanglinskunda, undelagana. Atmadhavani, kaapdarama, kallapudanuginsamani. Me, vedithen, netskunnamo. Adi, ma vektikatha, kutumba, sangajivitalu, na thanri, adi, me abhyasam cheskuntanu, krupusipinsa, valsinigam, manavajestu. Neenuma, prabhainatundhi, yesu kristvan, perata, mikkili, vaniporukumga, pradhinchi, bettilar, veeekonsunam, thanri. Amen. Mar thanri, na devu neeka prema, prabhain, yesu kristvarika krupa, parshidhatmadhavani, kanyonisahavasam. Ekadukudukununatridu, manukunu, aynamukunatridu, bedalakunu, ipudu, yelapudusadakalamuthodendunuka. Amen. Daicheshtelabadandi, partpaadkunam. Sahodarilu, mundu, nalguvandala. Tombyavutanukuntan, daicheshti, indali. Naluvandala tombyavutti. Parishuddhulayendudi. Apadpaaditapudu, mundu sahodarilu, daicheshi, paikvalanu, ma tharful. Partpaadluboskunathu, ninevandala pandanvidi.
(Music)